Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Douglas, August 7th, 2018. Could everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I do have some chairman's announcements, though. At least one chairman's announcement, and we'll hold that. But first, I want to bring Chief Migliannico up to the table.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone.
Evening, Chief.
Thank you for giving me some time tonight. As most of you heard, we had a pretty serious call last week, and I was, I can't tell you how impressed I was with everybody involved, starting with our dispatchers, right down to our officers, our lieutenant, and the 15-year-old girl, our resident, who handled herself better than most adults would have. So there's a lot of moving parts to this, so I wrote down the synopsis. I didn't want to miss anything, so I'm just going to read that off to you.
Please.
On Tuesday, July 25th, at 1:12 PM, Dispatcher Jake Soblocke received a 911 transfer call from the Uxbridge Police Department. Although the call originated in Douglas, it initially went to Uxbridge due to the new 911 cellphone answering points. Once the call was transferred to Douglas, the caller was identified as 15-year-old Morgan Doyle from Southeast Main Street. Morgan told Dispatcher Soblocke that there was a strange car at the end of her driveway with two men in it, and that she was afraid that they might try and break in. At that time, Dispatcher Soblocke immediately sent Officer Tony Yanino, Jake Bloniaz, and Lieutenant David Brown to the house. Dispatcher Brandon Oger then spoke with Morgan while Dispatcher Soblocke notified Boroughville and Uxbridge Police for assistance. While the officers were en route to the house, Morgan kept Dispatcher Oger advise of the men's movements. At one point, she observed one of them go back to the car, retrieve a pry bar, and then make his way to the rear of the house. Morgan told Dispatcher Oger that they were trying to pry the back door open to get inside. Dispatcher Oger relayed that information to the responding officers and advised Morgan to hide until they arrived. Within four minutes of receiving the call, Officer Yanino and Officer Bloniaz arrived and observed the suspect vehicle parked at the end of the driveway. As they made their way to the house, they cleared the car to ensure that nobody was in it. Although the car was empty, Officer Yanino noticed that the keys were in the ignition. At that time, he removed the keys to prevent the suspects from escaping if they made it back to the vehicle. As both officers approached the back of the house, they observed that the window screen was removed and both subjects had already entered. Officer Yanino and Bloniaz immediately engaged the subjects and ordered them to the ground. However, they fled out the front door and tried to make their way back to the car. The officers chased both suspects back to the vehicle and caught up to them as they entered it. It was at that time that they realized Officer Yanino took the keys, and they were unable to escape. After a brief struggle, both men were taken into custody. At that time, Lieutenant David Brown arrived and removed Morgan from the home and led to search for additional suspects. After a thorough search of the home and the surrounding area, it was confirmed that there was no one else involved and that the two in custody were the only two there. As chief, I can't tell you how proud I am of everybody who handled this call. Like I said in the beginning, starting with our dispatchers who took the call, to what they relayed to the officers, and most of all, the bravery and courage that Morgan showed during this whole ordeal. And if it weren't for her, it's a good chance that these two probably would have got away. But because of her actions, we were able to get them into custody, and they're going to be where they belong for a while.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
So with your permission, I have a couple of citations I'd like to issue
Please.
to our dispatchers and our officers and Morgan.
Yes.
Great. The first two I'm going to give out to our dispatchers, and these are for outstanding performance commendation. It reads for your outstanding performance answering a 911 emergency call which resulted in the apprehension of two suspects who were in the act of committing a violent crime in the Town of Douglas on July 25th, 2018, and it's dated this 7th day of August, 2018. Dispatcher Brandon Oger. And Dispatcher Jacob Soblocke. I'll give out these to the officers who responded. The first one, it's the Outstanding Performance Commendation. Goes to Officer Jake Bloniaz. It reads for your outstanding performance in the apprehension of two suspects who were in the act of committing a violent crime in the Town of Douglas on July 25th, 2018. Next one goes to Officer Tony Yanino. The only guy spotted enough in the department to take the keys out of the car. Now for Morgan. I'm going to issue you the Civilian Commendation for Bravery. Reads awarded to Morgan Doyle for the bravery and courage you displayed in the Town of Douglas on July 25th, 2018, while assisting the Douglas Police Department apprehend two suspects committing a violent crime at your home. Now, I also want to tell you that the police union wanted to do something for Morgan, and being the father of two daughters, I know that retail therapy is very good for a girl with some trauma. So they have gotten her a gift certificate to do some shopping. So we hope that helps.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman, but just before I end, I also want to thank, I have to thank the Uxbridge Police, the Boroughville Police. Within four minutes, our guys were on scene. Probably within eight minutes, we had eight officers on scene, and probably within 10, we had 10 officers on scene. So Uxbridge backed us up, Boroughville backed us up. And also Chris Yacino from Eagle Star Security.
Yes.
The next day, he came into the station. He does a lot of work for us, and he didn't want any credit for this and didn't want it to be known, but I talked to him earlier tonight, and I told him I was going to let everybody know what he did, but he offered to put and install a security system and monitor it for the Doyles until...
Excellent. Good. I'm very glad to hear that.
Thank you.
And Chief, we're not going to leave it out. Thank you. You're doing a great job running the department from my point of view.
Thank you.
And it obviously shows in the performance of your men and women, so...
Thank you. We have a great department. Couldn't ask for better people.
The only thing missing from your presentation is a picture of the burglar's reaction when they couldn't find...
Well, I can tell you, Officer Yanino will tell you it was priceless. As he was telling him, "I got your keys."
Where were the keys?
They were on his front seat.
Front seat?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then in my pocket.
Right.
Damn, there's a car thief around.
Exactly.
Yeah, he probably wants to file charges against Yanino.
Plain view, Chief, while you're here, do you have a deliberity to talk much about the Jamestown case and kind of give people a sense of what Douglas's role was in that?
Yeah, I can give you a heads-up on that. So there was quite a few burglaries in Boroughville. We had one here in Douglas. We believe that people were tied into a couple in Northbridge as well. Detective Sergeant Gould identified with, along with Sergeant Luet from Uxbridge and Officer Bohannon from Sutton, a couple of suspects out of one socket. So they did some surveillance on them, actually put a GPS on their car, and noticed that the GPS was circling around in Jamestown in a neighborhood last week. So they notified Jamestown, and Jamestown had just received a couple calls for some breaking and enterings. So due to the GPS and due to their efforts, they were able to help call Jamestown and locate the car, and they placed a tune custody for probably in excess of 30 BNEs throughout the area.
Excellent. Good work. Thank you very much.
Really?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I think on behalf of the Board, I thanks Colonel Morgan, too. That was a brave thing to do and a great thing. You helped a lot of people. Thank you very much.
Fantastic.
Purple Heart Day.
Tell you.
It's all me?
Tell you.
It's the hot seat, Mr. Chairman.
You probably noticed, the Board voted back on May 15th, proclaimed Douglas as a Purple Heart community. The highway department installed five Purple Heart signs at the entrances of town, Gilboa Street, Davis Street, Northeast Main, Webster and South Streets. Today, August 7th, the day of our meeting, is Purple Heart Day. Was created to commemorate this day in 1782, when General George Washington created the Purple Heart Medal, a military declaration that's awarded to those wounded and killed while serving in the United States Armed Forces. The holiday also encourages people to pay their respects to fallen soldiers, to listen to the stories of soldiers and veterans, and to thank them for their service to the nation. I have some more history here, if we want to go through it on Purple Heart Day, but I think we just want to point it out and observe that it is today.
Yes.
Questions? Issues?
Just in the packet, I thought it was a very informative packet, Suzanne. I'll commend you for that. But 1.8 million, they believe, to have been handed out and, or handed out, awarded in the country since its inception. A lot of sacrifice.
And something we don't want to forget.
And now, it is not only awarded to those that have died in action, but also those that display bravery and valor as prisoners of war and while fighting certain types of domestic violence, terrorism.
Okay. Good to know. I didn't know that. I have, as you know, I'm filling in for Kevin Morse tonight. He is the chairman, I'm the vice chairman. Under chairman's announcements, I'm going to read an announcement that he had for the record. I ask you to bear with me. I've got my glasses on, but I'm reading it off my phone, and it's not the biggest type in the world. Residents of Douglas, as many of you following Dynamic Douglas have seen, the tiger on the municipal center gym painted by a local resident when the building was known as the Memorial School was painted over. This decision was made by the Douglas Youth Basketball Association in an effort to offer a clean new look to the gymnasium their team's playing. This was by no means intended to erase history or upset the residents of Douglas that once used that same gym for their high school games. At the time this occurred, Douglas did not have a formal policy in place as it pertains to improvements or alterations to municipal properties by private organizations. This board, in conjunction with the town administrator, is issuing a policy to ensure situations like this do not occur again. And residents of Douglas will have full disclosure on any and every improvement to a town property moving forward. Nothing any of us say or do can change what has taken place. We are all sorry to see a piece of local history gone. What we can do is find a way to move ahead. I'm proposing that the Board of Selectmen and the town administrator enlist the assistance of the superintendent of schools to identify a senior at the Douglas High School that is artistically inclined to take on painting a new tiger in the gym as their senior project, an accrual of community service hours needed to graduate. I would ask the Douglas Youth Basketball Association to donate some funding to sponsor this endeavor. Upon completion of the project, we can host an unveiling of the tiger and invite Rose, the original artist, to participate, where we can present to her a framed picture of the tiger she painted many years ago. It is my sincere hope that this gesture helps ease some of the hurt feelings and animosity that has been generated by this event and brings us together as a community. Regards, Kevin Morse, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. Is there anyone here for anything that is not on our agenda? All right, moving on. We're at, oh, we're past 7:05. Good. Item one, fuel storage application for Daphne's Concrete.
All right. And your packet is application from Daphne's Fuel Storage. This is an application for the, that goes with the property. It's not with the business. It stays with the land.
Okay.
It is approved by the fire chief, and the Board of Selectmen hold the hearing for it, and then the town clerk will monitor it after that.
All right, so I have to open a public hearing for this?
Yep.
Okay. I move that we open a public hearing for the Daphne's Concrete Fuel Storage.
One second then.
Can you move that?
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? Okay. The hearing is now open.
The fire chief did send an email stating that everything is in order and that he did sign off on the application.
Okay. Good.
We just, we need to add one additional propane tank.
Could you just tell me who you are? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Chris Daphne.
I was pretty sure, but I need you to identify yourself for the record.
Yeah. We're just looking to add one additional propane tank. We need additional storage for heating our hot water in the wintertime, and we have Osterman here in case, in case anyone has any questions as to what the need is.
How big a tank?
1,000 gallon, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah.
Questions?
Fire chief's time with them.
That would say the maximum quantity was 3,000, so that means you could add some more later, or?
We currently have two 1,000 gallons, and we put a larger hot water heater in, and when we did that...
They need more pressure.
We need more pressure.
Yeah, I need more pressure to operate.
I told them to just come fill it every day.
No.
For the BTUs to operate. Any other questions? I want to entertain them all. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I need to ask if there's anybody in the audience that may come.
Excellent. Glad I have you here. Anybody else in the audience who wish to comment on this or ask questions?
Yeah. Very good. I am 100 Ica Jam Road. I am the butter to Pine, Sand and Stone property and to DeFreeze Corporation property. And Daphne Cement rent leases the land from Pine, Sand and Stone. And so I try to convince Pine, Sand and Stone that we should buy pollution and liability insurance. He didn't want to buy it because he is also doing asphalt, re-ground asphalt in the DeFreeze Corporation land. You know, contractors bring in the asphalt, broken up asphalt, and he re-browns it. And I told him that's hazardous, but he denied it. I said, "I know it's hazardous," because, you know. And so finally, I convinced him. I told him, you know, last month, I told him, "You don't know what the weather's going to be. You could have a lightning strike, you could have a hurricane or a tornado a month from now. Nobody knows." So I finally convinced him, so now he has bought the pollution liability insurance. So I'm satisfied if they put the extra change.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else to speak on the issue? Close the public hearing?
I'll move that we close the public hearing.
I will second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
I move that we approve the storage tank as it's presented.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Early nay today. Thank you.
All right, good enough. Good luck. Past 7:15, that's good. Item number two on our agenda is a hearing, chapter one, chapter 61, I'm sorry, thank you. Our, our as a board, Board of Selectmen's right of first refusal on two parcels on Orange Street known as the Chase Property.
There were two applications submitted, one for 6.24 acres, the other for 2.38 acres. The application has been reviewed by the Planning Board, Open Space, and the Conservation Commission, who met last night, and all three committees vote that you waive your right of first refusal, meaning you do not purchase the land.
And this is the second group of...
This is, yeah, so this is like number three, four.
Right. We did two parcels previously, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Anyone here to speak on that issue? Hearing, may I entertain a motion?
Move approval of the request that the town do not, we do not exercise our right of first refusal.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. Number three is scheduled for 7:30.
They're here.
They're here?
Yeah.
You know we can't start early.
If it's a hearing.
All right.
We're going to skip ahead for 10 minutes, okay? We'll skip to item number...
Sorry. She's a stickler for these things.
Code Red proposal.
There you go.
So I'll invite the chief up. I just want to, going back to that prior agenda item, was that a technical public hearing?
Which one?
Did you have to open and close a public hearing on that?
For the chapter 61, do we need to do that?
Not really. No, it's, it's...
No, we didn't do it for the other two parcels.
The only reason I put it as a hearing is so that I could have a time associated with it.
All right. Very good.
We'll accept your legal opinion.
Thank you.
In the absence of legal...
Instead of hearing, just write ish. 7:15 ish.
7:15 ish.
Mr. Chairman, I bombarded the board with a lot of information about Code Red, not knowing if anybody was familiar with the system and what it's for. The Public Safety Chiefs and I, and Chief Enson's on vacation tonight, I'm glad the police chief was able to hang around. We've talked about rolling this out and getting a system in place that allows us to communicate with virtually everyone in the town who wants to participate very, very quickly. So Code Red is part of a larger corporation that has built quite a success story across the country, building out this system, and they don't pull any punches about how they go about it. They spend the money, they buy the databases, where you unwittingly have signed away your phone numbers. They purchase all of that, they aggregate it, they sort it out by zip code and by location, and they make that available to emergency management agencies all across the country to purchase, to allow for rapid communication of significant events. If you're aware of how this works, I mean, now it's, even when I bought it for Tiverton two years ago, it was nowhere near as sophisticated as it is now. If you opt in to have your cellphone activated in the Code Red system, not only does your phone number receive a phone message, you might sign up for a text, you would also automatically receive postings of emergency weather situations. Because you're in the Code Red system, you would receive a notification from the system. And that's what it is. It's a mass communication, rapid communication for limited, you know, very important messages to go out. And like I said, we rolled it out in Tiverton at some, about a very similar expense, just a little bit more, because it's based on population. And for instance, we had an over 55 neighborhood with quite a few homes in North Tiverton. An individual who was not of sound mind was able to get out of the house, started wandering the woods. Dispatch was able to highlight an area based upon how fast a person could move and called every home within that radius with a silver alert, and they were able to find that person very quickly. And we had the same kind of thing happen with a BNE. There was nobody in the home, but we were able to put a BOLO out for the entire civilian population. A vehicle was made a little bit further up the road, and they were able to apprehend those suspects. So Code Red is, is really sort of a way for us to engage the citizenry in their own emergency management-type situations. And it is a $4,450 outlay. We had a somewhat lower estimate early on from Code Red, because we were going to kind of strip out a couple of the services. We decided against that, so we did put $2,500 in the civil preparedness budget that was approved by town meeting. It is there. The thought is, we would get the other 1,950 from the fund that's been set aside from the Wallem Lake entry fees, which would be a very small proportion of that account, but would get us up and running with Code Red, and I guess the events of the last few weeks have proven that we need this kind of thing. Did I let you add at this point of...
Just a budgeting question. We typically budget 2,500 for EMA. Is this over and above, or this is the line item, 2,500?
So we added to the civil defense budget, we went back and did an inquiry in past years about how much has actually been spent out. So yes, the Town of Douglas usually throws 2,500 bucks, 2,800 bucks. Usually only spend about 300 of it.
Okay.
This year, we would actually spend out the account in order to put this in place. I said a lot already, I just, I asked the chief to stay and see if he...
I would just concur with what Mr. Wojcicki says. There's so many things that you can do in so many areas that you can concentrate on, and when something like that happens, whether it's a past BNE, an elderly person, an Alzheimer's patient, a missing child, you've got to get the, the people in the community are the eyes and ears, and the more eyes you can get out there, I mean, you got, you know that, I mean, it's amazing, as the tips flow in, but you've got to get the word out there. And when you can concentrate in those areas for, for the amount of money that we would be paying, I think it's certainly worth it, and I know the fire chief's on board, and we've discussed it numerous times. I mean, if we can, if we can pull it off with that money from that account, I think it'd be wise.
Is there going to be an annual fee of that?
It will be an annual fee of that magnitude.
Is it a passive signup, meaning they have data, they know we're in 01516? If you happen to be on someone's database and they import it into our file, it'll be there?
So there will be an operational link to our website that allows you to do two things. If we already have your number, it allows you to opt out. So a lot of times, people don't realize it, but we'll have all their cellphone numbers in their text information, and the first time an alert goes out, they've got a phone ringing over here, a phone ringing over there, and everything's going bling, bling, bling. So they usually downgrade it to one. You can opt out using the functionality on the town's website once it's up and running. You can also decide, well, we didn't sign that phone up, so we want that phone to have it, too. You just go in and sign up. So it's both active and passive. You can do it either way. I think the experience is, there was another company that was fairly popular for a while called Nixel.
Yep.
That was out, and they required you to sign into it, and guess what? Nobody did it.
Nobody ever would, no.
Yeah.
We actually, probably going back, it might be around five years now, the sheriff, I think, I don't know if you remember, but the sheriff's department used to run it free. It used to be free. They used to be able...
One call, right?
Yeah, it was a one-call thing. You'd call up the sheriff's department, ask them to put it out in a certain area, but like anything else with the budget cuts, that went away. But that was a, you know, that was a tool that we used often.
So they have a vested interest in finding as much contact points to Tim Bonin, and that hit me with nine messages. Right, and you get, the town gets dinged per message, so I'll get the same message nine times and the town will pay...
It is a fact that each unique contact point is a usage of a minute or of a message unit. And the 4,450 that we would pay every year keeps the number of minutes recharged, what is it, 1,500 minutes, I believe, is the total. So yeah, I mean, we want to eliminate unnecessary duplication because it's more efficient for us, but the minutes won't roll, the message units won't roll from one year to the next. So you can't build up a bank. It's, it's a service that you pay for on...
But it won't deplete the, the amount of funding that we pay for that particular year we would cost more because Tim Bonin's got nine phones.
No. No. It just uses up, every time we send a message out, it would use up more units than would be necessary.
Okay.
But you say that, but you know, at any given time, most of us, I mean, you have a family member that's, that's here and you're somewhere else, and having all the phones signed up makes sense. But this past weekend, so I have on my, I don't have it with me, but on my phone, I have the Code Red app downloaded from my phone, and I was in Home Depot or something this weekend when the tornado touched down a Webster, and you know, the phone went off constantly because I had signed up for this area.
You can sign up for the certain area if they have Code Red, you'll get the notice.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a helpful service for us to do emergency response. What's entailed here is, I would, I feel like I need your authorization to request the money from the DCR Fund, and we would execute the contract, but then we would also have to come forward with, for lack of a better term, a policy or a standard operating procedure to prevent the one thing that can go wrong with this. If you watched all those poor people in Hawaii running for cover because they, they thought a missile was coming from North Korea, typically the way you stop that is you have to have double sign-off before a message is launched.
Right.
And that prevents those kinds of quick haphazard errors. There was a labeling mistake, and so the thing's been studied to death, but there was a labeling mistake that made it very unclear, so the operator actually was clicking on the wrong message, and it was really only the difference of a piece of a word.
And there are, there's already policies that exist with the checks and balances in there.
Yeah.
It would just be a matter of, you know, obtaining those, and then tweaking it to our needs.
Yeah, exactly.
How would we get the word out to residents if they don't have their numbers already, but they wanna opt in? Put it on the page?
We put it on the webpage, we can put it in the newspaper, we can talk about it.
Put it in the newspaper, you can put it on the webpage, we can put it on our Facebook page, the fire department can put it on their Facebook page, you'd be surprised how fast it will spread.
So, will we be able to-
Yeah, we can-
So, will we be able to check to see if our number's in the database?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're not opting into something we don't know whether we're in or not out?
That's right.
Right.
And then even, I would say, even at some point, if you got an alert for something that you didn't wanna get an alert for, you could opt out at that point in time. It's not something that you're gonna be hampered with, once you get something that you're not interested in. We've been wanting to do this for a while.
It's another tool. It gives us another tool, and if we can afford it, certainly for that amount of money, it's, you know, again, you never know what's gonna happen.
I think it increases public safety, and it also provides security to the residents as well. To get, you know, with that tornado that touched down in Douglas, we didn't get warning, but we did for the one that touched down in Webster.
Right.
So, I would hope this system would sort of ensure that if-
And that warning was, I think, what, thirty seconds?
Yeah, exactly.
About a thirty-second warning?
No, you know, unfortunately, in the parts of the country where tornadoes are common, that really is the experience. Sometimes you only get one or two minutes in the middle of the night, to try to get people's safety, that's why people die.
But, you know, thirty seconds, two minutes is better than-
Right, yeah, yeah.
I'm assuming, too, that in towns that have this, it cuts down on informational calls to the station.
Yeah, you would be surprised that when something, when something's going on, and the phone's ringing off the hook, there are a lot of people who want the information. That's why we'll, you know, you could utilize that at that point in time, but still, even now, when something goes on, we try and get it on the Facebook page as soon as possible, because that cuts down a lot of calls. And you can't blame people for calling, they don't know if their area's the only area out of power, or is the whole town out of power? How long are they gonna be out? That curiosity, and people without their, the things that they need, stir up the calls. But, again, if something like that happens, and we could put out an all-call, it's gonna limit the calls that we intake.
We getting the two-way messaging feature?
I don't think so. I think that was a substantial uptick in the cost of this thing. I'd like to run the bare-bones system before we go for the bells and whistles. If it's there, I think we'd use it. We'd probably use it with call volunteer firefighters and other things that we would, but really, that is the core system that we're really interested in having.
So, could you use this for calling, is it for communicating to call firefighters?
We wouldn't use it, because we have I Am Responding, which is a different app. It's a little bit more functional for the fire department.
If we have something like that, they get toned out, and then they can actually, the dispatchers have a screen downstairs, where they can log on their app on their phone, and all the dispatcher has to do is look up, they don't even have to call anymore, they already know who's coming in, because they've already done it on their app. It's called I Am Responding, so as soon as they tone it out, all they have to do, within seconds, they look at that screen, they know who's coming.
But in terms of getting the word out to staff for a building closure or other things, that's the only thing we have, is I Am Responding, or whatever the police have, but the rest of the civilian staff doesn't have that. We would, we would build that.
I'm excited about, I would say, this looks like a very substantial and professional communications delivery tool, and as such, your systems are only good as your data, right? Do we anticipate a fair amount of database work getting this thing together, and is there substantial training that we need to think about?
There's a fair amount of training on how to create and launch messages, and my view is that there should be a stock of pre-recorded messages that we can simply launch, and learning how to use the map functionality. Our dispatchers are probably very handy with knowing what the streets and locations of things, so they'd be able to draw a circle on a map and really be able to bang out a message very quickly. In terms of the database building, like I said, they have done that. That's really what we're paying for, is the work they have done to buy and assemble and scrub these databases. If we had an internal database, we could share it with them, it would probably enhance their service, but probably not much. In my experience, in my previous employment, they had, they had just about everybody, because you don't realize how many places you've put your phone number down. With all that fine print on page five that you never, ever read, you just sign because you want whatever it is, and someone's got your phone number.
Someone from Nigeria tried to reach me the other day, I didn't take that call.
Don't take that one.
No.
Don't take any calls from the IRS either.
And I think it's a great use of the beach fund.
Is there, do we know what is in that, in that fund? Just curious, the most part.
We haven't asked for this year. The close of last year, there was thirty thousand. I'm not sure where they came out with the fee this year, whether they updated, or if that's for a future year.
I wanna say, I think they did, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I know it was on the table.
It was on the table.
They were definitely talking about it, whether they did it or not, I don't know.
I think we would know if it made it.
But once we get to Labor Day, I think we can get a pretty good read on what's in it. At the pace it was going, it should be about forty-two, forty-three thousand.
It doesn't go away if we don't use it to somebody's source, does it?
No.
No, that comes to us. That's my understanding. Any further discussion on this?
Well, we're making a three-year commitment, is basically what we're doing, and I think it probably will take three years to figure out its power, so I'm totally confident with it.
We need a vote on this, correct?
I would like, if you could, to authorize me to request the money from DCR, so we can get it rolling, and then, like all policies, our policy would have to come to you for three readings before, it would be the policy of the town.
So, vote. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That was awesome today, chief, thank you.
That was good. It's after seven-thirty. We'll go to item three on the agenda, entertainment license, celebration, graduation, family movie night.
Your packet is an application for entertainment license by Mass Law and Town Bylaw. We are not required to notify a butters, but as courtesy, we do, when it is entertainment that is close to residence. So, a butters were notified. Celebration graduation is a committee that puts on the party for the graduating class. It's a drug-free, safe-free party. Is it still all-night?
It's all-night.
All-night-long party. And this is a fundraiser, they're going to do a movie night at Soldiers Field, and there is a ten-dollar fee, if you would like to waive that. That's entirely up to you. And it is August twenty-third, seven-thirty to ten-thirty, and the two co-chairs are here. Hold on, I need to get your names right. Let's see. Tracy Kellerman and Maria Cuser? Cuser? Cuser. Recreation House signed off on this, because they would be using Soldiers Field.
Would I be spoiling surprise if they asked what the movie is?
We haven't decided.
They haven't decided, okay.
It's definitely gonna be a family-friendly movie, but it hasn't, we haven't decided yet.
Is it gonna be an all-night thing, with multiple movies?
No, just one note, not, one movie being shown. We're assuming that, given the time of year, it'll be about eight-fifteen to start. We're looking for a movie that's under an hour and a half, so we'd like to have everything cleaned up and out of the park, and everyone out of the park by ten-thirty.
What do you envision holding the screen?
We have a blow-up screen, it's similar to a bouncy house-
Yeah.
-that blows up. It's a hundred-and-twenty-foot screen, and we have a movie projector.
Do you know where in the facility you were thinking, with the small field, the big field?
The front field, so that people maybe driving by can see it, and hopefully would stop.
Yeah.
Any other questions, discussion?
Commend your spirit in doing something like this.
Yeah, just having been involved in the baseball program, and knowing the volunteers that it takes to keep that place great, do you have a trash plan and a bathroom cleanup plan?
We'll be responsible for all of that. We will have somebody monitoring the bathroom, make sure that there's no tomfoolery, and we will be cleaning up the field, yeah.
Volunteerism has been, thank you, kind of a subject in town recently, and I could tell you, we have a wonderful group of baseball volunteers that have cleaned bathrooms that they normally wouldn't clean in their house, so we wanna protect those things.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions from the board?
Concession stand use, are you thinking of that?
We will not be using the concession stand, we will be bringing packaged foods to sell, candy, bottled water, that type of thing.
Awesome.
I move approval of the request and ask that we waive the ten-dollar fee for the license.
A second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it.
Okay.
Good luck.
Have fun.
Do you wanna me to mail this, or do you wanna come, have somebody come in and pick it up?
I can come pick it up.
All right.
Yeah, just let me know when it's available.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Let me know if you need anything, in regards to the keys and things.
Okay. Thank you.
I just wanna know what the movie is, and decide, that's all. All right, item number five. Work in public right-of-way, a license agreement, Glen at Main Streets.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A few weeks back, the highway superintendent noticed some work occurring at the intersection of Glen Street and Main Street. A private resident was improving the area within the town right-of-way, so we contacted the individual, let him know that in order to work in the town right-of-way, we needed some certificates of insurance, and basically some agreement that the town would be held harmless for any work in the right-of-way. Town council recommended the license agreement that's in your packet. The owner at that location signed the copy, submitted it, along with the certificate of insurance, and both the highway superintendent and I took a look at the work that he was intending to do, and we both agree that it's not gonna have an impact on Route sixteen, which is, you know, there's no safety issue to speak of. I was a little concerned about, you know, changes to drainage. He basically indicated that, you know, he's not intending on changing any drainage patterns, so, all in all, it looks like a good project and improvement for the area, so both the highway superintendent and I recommend it.
Excellent. Any questions from the board?
No, I think it's gonna look great when it's done.
Correct.
I saw the one being done, so.
Thus, I would entertain a motion.
So, I move that we approve the work on, in the public right-of-way for what, at Glen at Main.
To sign the license agreement.
And to sign the license agreement. Thank you, Mr. Kind of-
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it.
I actually have two copies, so that you can have one also, please.
Thank you. Item number six, order of takings, Brookside and Royal Crest Drive.
Back in the fall, at the town meeting, the town people voted to take four parcels of land by eminent domain or otherwise. These parcels of land originally were intended by the planning board to be taken as roadway projections as part of the subdivision rights of ways for both Brookside Drive, as well as Royal Crest Drive or Kingwood Estates subdivision. These parcels were not taken under subsequent advice by town council, and that's why they remained owned by the individual developers. Well, as you might expect, the development companies have become insolvent, insolvent, and these par, four parcels have fallen into tax delinquency. So, this is really being initiated and driven by the tax collector and the treasurer, and so, we're back on the original track of taking these as part of the subdivision. Accordingly, town council has drafted the order of taking that's in your packet. There are four parcels that are relatively small. Two are at Brookside Estates, and two parcels are at Royal Crest Drive. So, with your indulgence, Mr. Chairman-
Please.
I will read a paragraph, and if you agree, someone can make the motion. The board adopts an order of taking as approved by Article Ten at the November sixth, two thousand seventeen annual town meeting by eminent domain of the land consisting of map one-seventy, lot six, and map one-seventy, lot eleven, on Brookside Drive, as shown on a certain parcel, a certain plan entitled Plan of Brookside Drive, as altered and laid out for acceptance and a public, and recorded with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book eight-ninety-six as Plan Number one-hundred-and-seventeen. And, quote, "Road A," end quote, "along with," quote, "future road extension," end quote, "on Royal Crest Drive, as shown on a plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan, Royal Crest Drive, in the town of Douglas, Massachusetts, for the Board of Selectmen, and dated December tenth, two thousand and eight, and recorded with the Worcester County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book eight-hundred-and-seventy-six as Plan Number one-hundred-and-two." Further, the Board of Selectmen has determined that the value of the lots taken, as established by the Douglas Assessor, are as follows. Map one-seventy, lot six, Brookside Drive, two thousand seven hundred dollars. Map one-seventy, lot eleven, Brookside Drive, four thousand dollars. Road A, Royal Crest Drive, four thousand three hundred dollars. And, road extension, Royal Crest Drive, four thousand two hundred dollars.
Am I right, the outstanding taxes would equal the pro tanto, or whatever, that we're paying? We're not paying any, we're just taking it as-
We have set aside funds in the event there was an issue with that. We do have back taxes owed, and those back taxes would go against the value of the lots that are outstanding. And my understanding is that it's fairly close in value, but I couldn't tell, speak if it's exactly the same.
And the owners of the fee interest are sort of defunct now, is that-
All the companies involved are insolvent.
Yeah.
So, there's no-
They're dissolved on the Secretary of State's website.
So, there's no chance of getting any tax revenue from this group?
No.
Zero.
Well, we have some funds that are set aside as part of the subdivision, and we do have agreements that address this, it's only fifteen hundred dollars' worth on the Royal Crest Drive stuff that we could set towards this.
And what's the advantage to the town in doing this? Is it just cleans up the property, it helps the residents?
As I mentioned, it's initiate, well, it allows extensions of roads to the next abutting land, and that's the purpose of these projections, so that individual parcels don't necessarily become landlocked, they will become accessible and developable. That wasn't the goal, from the planning board's perspective. The request subsequently came from the treasurer's office because of this tax issue, and it would be an ongoing issue, that, just to clean up the books from her, and that's what initiated this.
Looks like they knew that all along.
That, you know, we should've taken everything back, we should've taken it as part of the subdivision roadways, and if we have this situation again, I'm gonna make sure that that's what happens.
Any further discussion?
So, I will move Bill's motion.
A second.
Any further discussion, again? I think this is a roll call vote, Suzanne, is that correct?
No.
It is not, okay.
Well, I guess you do.
I have it here in the-
Yeah, I guess you do. The way he, the way the attorney wrote this, I would, yes.
Are you gonna mark it off?
I will.
How, Dave, is aye?
Dave Cortez, aye.
Tim Bonin, aye.
Mike, you is a-
And Mr. Morse, not present.
And I would ask that Mr. Cortez sign, please, and then I will notarize it.
And there's a few minor edits that I've read that will correct tomorrow. Yes.
Thank you.
Item number seven.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Kundav. Thanks. Signed state primary election warrant.
It's a move.
I like your style. A waiting a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I can't say further discussion.
What's the discuss?
I know.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Welcome. Number eight, insurance policy, third reading and approval.
Mr. Chairman, we've kind of been over this a couple of times now. This is the final reading, if there are any edits anybody wants to make. This is an existing policy, we're updating it to accommodate certain changes to the right-of-return for those employees who are coming back to the town's plan after retirement.
Any further discussion on this? I would entertain a motion to adopt the policy as written.
It's a move. Second.
Any discussion on the policy? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Number nine, minutes of the July 17, 2018 meeting, both regular and executive session.
I move that we approve the regular minute meeting, minute, meeting minutes for July 17.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. 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 Any nays? The aye has it. Executive session, motion.
And I move that we approve those as well and to retain, I believe.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. This brings us to your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, this evening, I have five items I want to update the board on very quickly. One, everyone is very much aware that we had a small tornado that set down in town, and I just wanted to compliment the police department, fire department, the highway department for an extraordinary, fast response, a comprehensive response. And what we really were able to learn from this incident was putting faces to names, seeing the value of the assets that could be brought to bear. We got several visits from state officials who brought assets with them. So, we had the mobile command center for emergency operations was present in town. The state fire marshal is a certified drone pilot, was able to set a couple of drones in the air to review the damage, download the footage to the command center. The state director of EMA was here, of MEMA. It was just a good, dry run-through of some of the things that we've just been through in training. So, the ICS 300 training gets pretty dry, but to actually see one of our call firefighters logging each and every decision that was being made and the assets being allocated, see how the system is really supposed to work. It was, it was good that nobody was hurt, so we were able to look at it as an opportunity to do things. I want to be especially complimentary to the, to our workers in the highway department who jumped on that thing at about 8:30 in the morning, and really, all the power was restored and the road was reopened by about 4, 5 o'clock in the afternoon. And if you watch one of our operators use the thumb grabber on the machine and just move great big huge trees as if it was nothing and get them perfectly placed in the dump truck, and the way the equipment was moving, how fast we were able to respond. I also want to be very thankful to Team Rubicon, which came from all across the country to assist on private property. Generally speaking, and I think it's important to set people's expectations, we don't have the authority to go on your property unless there's an imminent threat of loss of life. We're not in the business of cutting trees down and getting things out of your way, we just don't have the authority to do that. Team Rubicon does, the landowner signs off on it, and these are retired military, retired first responders, some active first responders, and they just come in like a whirlwind, to use a pun, and finish the cleanup. So, I think they left here Saturday. Friday was probably the last day in the field, and Saturday they wrapped up. So, it was a good opportunity to see how all the pieces fit together if we ever had a more significant, longer-lasting disaster event. Those would be the same resources we would draw upon. So, the second issue I have outlined is just a quick update on health insurance. There's a move afoot, and probably started about a month ago, and I think in my last update, I mentioned it to you, that Worcester County municipalities and school districts are considering self-insurance as a model. Those meetings are progressing, and, you know, we're learning more and more details about what would be involved. Douglas is very far ahead of most of our neighboring communities in terms of the way we've structured our health insurance. So, for us, to actually save any money going on further doesn't involve plan changes for our employees. That, that's been done, we can't ask anymore from our employees until the rest of the state catches up with us. We can change the way we do business and the way we purchase the product. A self-insurance model would separate the health insurance plan and medical care from pharmacy benefit management, and that's primarily where the savings come from, if you're able to separate that out, and begin to do a number of things that are very rational in the marketplace. One of them would be the rebates that come from the pharmaceutical companies right now passed through to our carrier. If you had a pharmacy benefit manager, those should come back against our premium. And sometimes, as much as 17% can be saved on the pharmacy benefit side by separating that piece out and working on it. Another area where we see savings in this approach is a much more intelligent manner of managing the most expensive cases. So, it is a voluntary process, but an employee who is engaged in the management of their own condition and is making all the right steps, and the easiest example to use is a diabetic who's staying on top of regular insulin injections and blood tests and sugar tests and keeping all the necessary records, they get a benefit. Some plans actually allow for the insulin to be provided for free because they know that you, as a patient, are eliminating so many of the risks associated with your condition by staying on top of it. So, that's basically case management. I am working on a piece, I've been working on this for a long time with some very smart people that I met in Rhode Island and who are still active in terms of overhead management. There's a move afoot to take the, some of the most expensive pieces of healthcare, which are specialty, you know, specialty, all your specialists, orthopedics, all the rest of it, and to no longer use the insurance carrier as a pass-through, but the direct bill on a cost basis. They get paid faster, which is what their interest is, but they only bill you what they would have gotten for reimbursement for your insurance. So, it takes that overhead piece out of the equation entirely.
How's that policed?
You have to police it, that's the thing. There's a little bit more activity involved on the part of the employer here to police it. But when you're self-insured, it's your dollars. You know, you're not paying into an insurance pool, and the insurance pool's settling your claims. You're setting aside a working rate that should cover your claims experience, and is also going to be the leverage you have at the table to make sure everybody's managing this properly. Again, I would say these conversations are the most basic, initial conceptual level, but they are ongoing, and I'll be updating the board as we go along. We have a meeting this Thursday, and then a week from Thursday with the different consultants that are trying to put together. The key is to get enough covered lives. So, Douglas would never be able to do this on its own. We would need to be, you know, you need 10,000, 15,000 people to be covered to really make the model work.
Is there anything, one question? Is there anything along the line that we have to do to build a pool, to begin to pay bills? Do we start with a pool of money, or?
That's an excellent question. It's asked quite often, Gene asked it at our last briefing, and the answer is yes. You pay an initiation upfront to make sure you have that cushion in place to cover your claims, plus some, so an upside potential. The difference is, of course, that becomes your equity in the mutual insurance arrangement, and you can build that equity and draw from it over time. One of the pitfalls of this thing is who polices, so who sits on top of the self-insured group and manages that equity? The biggest mistake you see is, I hate to be this crass, but when too many politicians get involved in it, then the goal is, we need a 0% this year, you know? And then, we burn up all our equity, and at the end of the road, after three or four years of zeros, there's a 15.
Right.
Right? So, it's entering into an agreement that has enough discipline where that's really not possible, where, you know, you're constantly staying on top of that. You might take an annual 6%, try to knock it down to 5% for your constituent members, but you shouldn't be trying to wipe it out to 0% because it's just, it's a water balloon, you're just squishing the water out to some future date. Is there anything else before I move on?
What about the timing of this, given our current contract for insurance?
So, we're in the best possible position because we're going out to bid this year regardless.
Yeah.
So, our, our plan year will end, and we will have to be out to bid this winter.
And would that dovetail potentially with this group coming together?
That would be the hope. But you can join at any time, it's just, when will you be active?
You may have a contract already within existence, or would you have to wait till your contract terminates?
You would.
So, we're looking at, what, fiscal '20, or?
Yeah. Fiscal '20.
Potentially, yeah.
But that's a much better, to me, when we were talking about the five-year budget, we did say that there, even with the override passing, there would still have to be one year where we took this bite of the apple.
Right.
Whether it was a premium co-share increase, or a deductible increase, or some other option. Because this has no, hopefully, no impact on our members, we, we're going to pursue this before we look at those other two options. Now, item number three on my list is cannabis, and just as a quick reminder, the town's moratorium will end on December 31st. So, if we back this out, if we want zoning laws to be in place, we would have to go to Fall Town Meeting to have those voted upon. In order to be ready for Fall Town Meeting, we need to start to get active now. I have drafted a memo, I've identified seven different issues, and drafted a memo, sent it off to legal counsel today for review before I circulate it to the board and to the public. There are some interesting points with the town's zoning bylaw, and what would be allowed or not allowed under certain definitions, because most marijuana establishments would fit one of our existing definitions. I think the question comes back to the board and to the people of the town, do you necessarily want a marijuana establishment to be able to do all the same things that a retailer in a different sector is able to do in a RC1 or RC2 zone?
And to be clear, we're talking about retail marijuana establishment.
That's probably, that's where the most tension will be, is around retail. And another question will be whether or not the town wants to limit the number of retail establishments that are permitted in town. There's a mechanism where you can marry up your marijuana licenses to the number of liquor licenses that you have. You can go all the way down to 20% of what you have available for liquor, but it takes a proactive vote. You have to decide that and put it in place. So, those, there are probably three or four use-table issues that I flagged, there's the number of permits, and one last one, which kind of blows my mind a little bit, but in its wisdom, the Commonwealth has decided that edibles are not food for purposes of But people are eating them. So, I don't really get it. I think the Board of Health in Douglas does have the authority to promulgate its own regulations to inspect any potential establishments in town that sell edibles, and I think it's only right that we pursue that as an option because...
But all the other stuff has to be tested.
Everything else has to be tested, but the edibles don't have to be from a licensed place. So, it's kind of a weird thing. I think it's an oversight or mistake.
Was that to protect?
They tested for the cannabis content, though.
Yeah, so all cannabinoid products must be approved by an independent testing laboratory and certified. It is what you say it is. This is what has prevented any retail establishment from opening anywhere in the Commonwealth. The CCC, the Cannabis Control Commission, has not yet licensed an independent testing laboratory. So, until they do, there won't be any product available.
Other than the one, they have them for medical.
Other than medical, right.
Is that food carve-out aimed at convenience stores and supermarkets and?
I think on the back end of it, it actually was triggered by a taxation question, and there are certain food items that are not taxed. So, they wanted us to be able to tax it under the local option, so they had, they just took the whole thing out of the food category entirely. May have had unintended consequences. But, so the goal would be, if everybody signs off on the memo as being an accurate depiction of what the issues are, to bring it to you as a board, policy decisions would be made here, we would draft however many general or zoning bylaw amendments need to be drafted, and then, under the process, they would all go to the planning board for public hearing, and it would be the planning board bringing that to the warrant for town meeting in the fall.
So, we have to really start early September?
Yes.
To move that?
Yeah.
I think it's a discussion worth having?
Absolutely.
Where are we on the grow facilities, progress in being an operation?
I have not been in the building.
Yeah.
I don't know how close they are. I know that they cannot operate until they have a license. I have not yet received the necessary communication from the CCC that indicates that their application is complete. Until I have that, I don't know that they're even going to be on the docket, and this is a busy commission, the CCC has 19 or more, every time I pick up a newspaper, it's a bigger number.
Right.
But, you know, they have a couple dozen in the pipeline, and so typically, one business is filing for three or four licenses because they want to cultivate transport, retail, and product manufacture all on the same site, but that's four different licenses. So, all of those things have to go through the hearing process, and they'll all be scrubbed by the CCC. So, this is taking a while, and they're meeting about once a month. They're not exactly in a hurry. My last two things I hope to make very quick. We have, some time ago, the board authorized the town administrator to complete the streetlights project. We are continuing to make project, progress on that. We have retained a design consultant who's a former director of Public Works in Lexington, George Woodbury, who's sort of the guru of all things streetlight, and a very nice guy to talk to, and is actually fun. It's amazing that somebody could know so much about something as mundane as a streetlight and make it sound interesting, but he does. He doesn't anticipate taking very long to finish our design, so we are still on track for a fall installation. Lastly, I put out a letter this week to the manager of the North Village Project, sort of resetting that relationship just a little bit. I think we were taken aback at the zoning board meeting as how much progress they were making, how many structures they had in progress and possibly sold before they really even had a shot at getting a CFO on those structures. So, we really kind of needed to step up our game on the administration side, which we feel that we're doing. We have recommendations ready for the zoning board meeting tomorrow night. Mr. Kundav will be there to detail those, but one of the things that we really want to bring to the forefront is a delegation of building inspection services to an outside third party that would be paid through the 53G account by the contractor, not by the town, but would give us a more hands-on, day-to-day presence in what goes on up there and making sure that they're hitting all their deadlines on the building side. On the engineering side, we have a couple of concerns. I think we've made progress on the fire suppression issue. The question is, do we need one cistern or two, and where exactly will they be located in the development? The fire chief has been doing a lot of work on that. I think we're favoring a solution where there's two, two 30,000-gallon cisterns because the development's an oval, it's fairly substantial distance. You really need something on either end of it to be able to service the entire thing, and that's, it's really just... And that's, it's really just a question now of where does the developer want to put them without interfering with his existing plans for the site? So, that's, that's an update in a nutshell. Chances are, there will be edits to the permit or the conditions made by zoning that would still have to come to you because ultimately, this was an MOU between the Board of Selectmen and the developer. So, it's a two-step process to getting that adjusted. That's all I had for you tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Can I just add on to Matt's tornado thing?
Sure.
There was the, a lot of residents and a group called Children's Haven that were donating food to the Team Rubicon on their own, just taking food over there.
Good.
Since there was officially a tornado in town, does that open us up for any federal or state aid?
No, unfortunately, it's, yes, you had a tornado, but you did not have a disaster that qualified for declaration, so, which is a blessing because nobody got hurt.
Thank you.
Takes more than just having a tornado.
Yeah.
I don't think we want any more.
It's like the lottery.
Exactly. In reverse.
Bad lottery.
Thank you, Mr. Wuchu. Any old business? Any new business? At this point, I will entertain a motion that Mr. Hughes is going to make.
I move that we enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation and to leave executive session for the purposes of adjournment.
A second.
Is that a roll call vote?
Yes, it is.
Hal, Dave is aye.
Dave Cortez, aye.
Tim Bonin, aye.
Mike Hughes, aye.